The time is 5:00 PM. We are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Tara Walter.
Here.
Councilmember John Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Kristin Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Michelle Cortez.
Here.
Councilmember Judy Hughes.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. At this time, we will go ahead and begin with the work session on the Town of Florence Development Impact Fees and the Town's Notice of Intent to Increase Fees.
Mayor, Member Council, I would like to welcome Carson Weiss from Tischler Weiss. If you recall, he was here on January 7th where we adopted our policies, our land assumptions policies, and now we're going through our next steps. One of the steps is, at 6 o'clock tonight, we will have a public hearing on our impact fees. On May 7th, we will adopt an ordinance that will establish those rates. Then it will be posted online for 75 days, and it will be effective on August 1st. Carson?
Thanks, Lisa. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure to stand in front of you again tonight to talk about the development impact fee study. As you're aware, we've talked about this. This will be the third work session, so I'm going to touch on some basic slides that we've gone over before and then go into the study. And please stop me at any time if you've got any specific questions you'd like me to ask. Since we've met before, I'll save you the blatant marketing spill where I tell you how much work we've done in Arizona. But one of the things that changed in 2012 with the new impact fee act is it required the communities basically adopt three integrated products. One is the land use assumptions, and second is the infrastructure improvement plan, also known as the IIP. We've already adopted those. The land use assumptions has to go out at least 10 years, and the IIP goes out 10 years for nonutility uses and can go out to 15 years for utilities. Now we're on to the third part of that process, or third product, and that's the actual development fee chapter within the integrated document. Another requirement under the act is that we have to make sure that we're basing the fees on the existing levels of service that exist in the town, and we're not using the fees to correct any existing deficiencies that one may think exist. We also have some limitations on what we can collect the fees for now. For instance, we can no longer collect for general government uses. Some recreation uses are limited to size, like for instance, 3,000 square feet of recreational facilities. Libraries are limited to 10,000 square feet. We can't use fees for training facilities for public safety anymore. And there's very strict refunding provisions in the act now as well. To refresh your memory on sort of the legal background on development fees, they are one-time payments. It's assessed only on new development, and they're designed to offset new growth commensurate demands for infrastructure that the town provides. We can't use that money for operations, can't use it for maintenance or replacement of any equipment, and it's basically a contractual arrangement to build the infrastructure. It's not a tax. A tax is for primarily revenue-raising purposes. We have to show a direct connection between the fee and the amount of infrastructure that we're going to provide. And with impact fees, there's basically three things that we need to show. One is the need. We have to show that the town has been growing over time, that growth's going to continue, and that growth's going to generate the demand for infrastructure. We have to show benefit, and we show benefit two ways. One, through the timing of the expenditure, meaning that we expend the money within the 10-year timeframe. That's authorized in the enabling statutes. And then the other is, we have to show geographic benefit. And so, in very large communities, you may see geographic service areas. We do have service areas within Florence, but they have to do with the active utility provision. So, we're recommending townwide in most cases. And finally, we have to show proportionality, and proportionality is the reason why we distinguish between single-family and multifamily, retail office and industrial, because they all have different demands on the various infrastructure systems. This slide summarizes the land use assumptions that you approved previously. We're projecting an increase in year-round residents, about 3,330, about additional 1,100 seasonal residents. The housing unit increases are projected at about 1,750 single-family units, about 250 multifamily units. We're also projecting about 3,700 new jobs, and that equates to about 1.3 million square feet of additional non-residential activity. Now I'm going to focus on each of the impact fees. We are doing what we call a consumption-based approach for parks and recreation, and that's basically where we take a snapshot of the current level of service and assume that that is going to be continued incrementally over time. We are recommending a townwide service area, and the components within this fee category include park and open space land acquisition, as well as the amenities or improvements that the town may construct on that land. This slide here shows the projected demand based on these levels of service. The real takeaway from this table is highlighted with the red circle, and the top of each table I'm going to show you basically has the level of service assumptions. But essentially, if we apply these levels of service standards to the projected increase in development I showed you on the previous slide, it generates the need for about $3.7 million of growth-related demand, meaning that the impact fees would generate about $3.7 million, and you would build the 39 acres shown here and the 285 additional pieces of amenities or improvements on that land. This table here shows the actual fee calculation. The different land or cost components are shown at the top of the table, and then the green box is the proposed fee. For single-family, the impact fee is about $1,934. That's an increase of $517 over the current fee. And the multifamily use is $1,437, which is an increase of about $289. You can see also that we have to assess nonresidential development according to the state act, and the fees are all going down for the nonresidential percentages, and they range anywhere from 19 cents per 1,000 square feet up to, or to as little as 10th cents a square foot or per 1,000 square feet. Turning our attention to fire, similar to parks and recreation, we use this consumption-based approach, where again, we're recommending a townwide service area. Because it is likely that the town would go out and issue debt for an additional fire station, we have included a credit for debt, and the reason why we do that is we have to guard against new development paying twice, once through the impact fee, and then again through a future stream of revenue that goes to pay for the same facility. And the components here are station square footage and apparatus. Again, if we focus on the circle here at the bottom, growth generates the need for about 8,674 square feet of additional station space and additional four pieces of apparatus. The total estimated growth-related cost is about $4.3 million. And then this table here shows the proposed fire development fee. Again, the top of the table shows the different cost factors, and the fees are shown in the middle. The proposed fee for single-family is $955, which is an increase of about $38 over your current fee. The multifamily goes down slightly by $33 to a total of $710. And then, on a per-square-foot basis, the commercial retail is 69 cents for retail, 88 cents for office institutional, and 48 cents for industrial flex. All of these are slight increases over the current fees. Moving on to police, we have a consumption-based approach there, a townwide service area. The components are police space and police vehicles. Growth is generated or estimated to generate demand for about 5,000 additional square feet of police space and about 15 additional vehicles. That has an estimated cost of about almost $2.2 million in growth-related needs. And this shows the recommended or proposed fees. Single-family house clocks in at $754. That's an increase of about $147 over the current fee. Multifamily's $560, which is an increase of $68. And then the commercial and fee is going up by 44 cents. Office industrial is going up by, or excuse me, is going up by $1.03. Commercial or office industrial or institutional is going up about 17 cents, and industrial flex is going up about 16 cents. Now turning our attention to water, the two utilities, I'm going to show you your two utility fees, we derive using a plan-based approach, meaning that we looked at a 10-year CIP to derive specific projects we based the fee on. The fee is only in the Florence Utility Service Area. As you know, there are several utility providers here, and the components are transmission, storage, and supply. This shows the water IIP. We've got about $1.4 million in transmission lines, about $1.2 million in the North Florence Storage Tank, and then we've got about $2.7 million for future well expansion. And then this shows the proposed water development fee. Again, it's highlighted in green. In all cases, the proposed water fee is going down. A single-family house would be typically under the first two categories, the 5/8-inch meter or the 3/4-inch, and both of those are increasing significantly. The fees range from $1,065 to about $1,597 for a single-family house. But for the largest meter size, which would be for your very, very large industrial users, it could go up to $282,000 per user or per connection. And then finally wastewater, plan-based approach used there, again, Florence Utility Service Area, a credit for future debt service that's planned, and then the components are collection systems and the wastewater treatment. And the wastewater IIP includes about $1.9 million in expenditures for lines, and then we've got the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, which is about $24.1 million. Then the fees here are going up in some categories and going down for other meter sizes. For instance, the single-family connections at the 5/8-inch meter and the 3/4-inch meter are going up slightly, about $2,400 and $3,600. The highest fee category would be for the 12-inch meter, which is $636,000. And then finally, our streets fee, we're doing a sort of a hybrid between the consumption and plan-based approach, a townwide service area, and the component is arterial road capacity. This slide here shows the road IIP. Now, we're not saying that the town is going to build all 101 lane miles of projects. This table is shown for two reasons. One, it's used to determine the weighted average cost per lane mile that you see at the bottom there of $1.1 million. But it also provides the basis from which the city will build roads, as you'll see as I go to the, actually, we took that slide out. But essentially, what we do is, we build an aggregate demand model. We talked about this the last meeting. It basically says, in order to maintain current levels of service on the town's road, you have to build X lane, or X number of lane miles. Let's just say it's 12 lane miles. The city or the town would select 12 lane miles off of that larger list, and that allows the town to respond to market conditions that may change over the next 10 years, any catalytic economic development projects that may happen. And so, in other words, it provides flexibility. It doesn't lock you into the town saying, "We're going to build roads A, B, and C," and then come back a year from now because something's changed, and then you have to go back and amend the IIP. Okay? And this shows the proposed fee. A single-family unit is $2,250, which is a decrease of $164, or excuse me, an increase of $164 over your current fee. The multifamily fee is also increasing, $247, up to a total of $1,560. And then the nonresidential fee categories are decreasing for office institutional and industrial flex and going up slightly for commercial retail. And this table here summarizes the proposed versus existing fees. The top two tables show your nonutility fees, and so the current single-family fee is about $5,027. The proposed is $5,892. That is an increase of about $865. The multifamily fee is increasing $571 to a total of $4267. All the three nonresidential categories are also increasing, the commercial retail by $783, industrial by $1,262, and office institutional by $101. And then the proposed water and wastewater fees, those are all going down on the water side, but going up slightly for the middle categories for wastewater, or excuse me, going down in the middle categories for wastewater and going up slightly for single-family and the very, very large industrial users. And then finally, one of the things that everyone wants to see when you're concluding an impact fee study is, well, how do we stack up against our neighboring cities or other communities that we may view as peer communities? And you can see here, you're clocking in at about $93, $157 per single-family house. When you compare that to some of your neighbors, like Coolidge, it's slightly higher. Casa Grande, it's in line. Other communities like Gilbert, it's much lower than Gilbert's, it's much lower than Goodyear's, it's much lower than Glyndell's, which we're continuing to work on, and it's now higher than the 10,000. And it's also almost as high as the north-central Pennell County fee. So, but you know, whenever you compare yourself to other communities, you always have to sort of caveat everything because, one, you don't know when the fees were calculated; two, you don't know if they were adopted at 100% of the maximum rate; three, you don't know if they excise certain components, meaning that maybe they adopted a park fee that only has an improvement component, doesn't have a land component. So, they're never really an apples-to-apples comparison, but it does give you, you know, a basic barometer of where you are relative to other communities. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Could you go back, I think, two slides? I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the slide in my packet, but I can't find, wait, go, the one that had the $5,000-something for residential?
This one here?
Yes. Okay, so, that says the proposed fee for a single-family is $5,892. That includes police, fire, parks, and roads, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the slide you were just on had a single-family of $9,357?
Because then you've got to add in the utility charges down below, which we assumed, I think, is a 3/4-inch meter.
So, for somebody who just has a, purchases a lot and wants to build a house or whatever they're going to build on it, single-family, they can expect to pay $9,357 in impact fees?
Yes.
Okay. Remember, I'm the one that's like dumb it down for me?
Yeah. That is if you're in the Florence, or the Florence Utility area. Obviously, if you were in Anthem or another part of the city served by another utility company, you wouldn't pay the Florence--
Yeah, this is like in-town limits.
Exactly. Exactly.
Not counting Anthem area, because that's not serviced by--
Right. It's within the town, but not serviced by your utilities. Yes, ma'am.
I was on that page.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Moving into the moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. At this time, we're moving into Call to the Public. Call to the Public is for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noted for discussion and legal action. Do we have anybody who would like to speak this evening? Okay, I did not receive any formal requests prior, so at this time, we're going to go ahead and close Call to the Public. We are not going to go into the hearings until 6:00 PM, so if you could kindly flip down to item number seven, which is the Consent Agenda. All items on the Consent Agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the Consent Agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of addendum to modification of the lease agreement dated June 1st, 2017, between the Town of Florence and Sharon Greer, owner of What's Up Stairs. Item B is ratification of extending a professional services contract with Colbrun for permit support and training with a total contract not to exceed $35,000. Item C is approval of the 2019 Town of Florence Title VI Implementation Plan, Title XI, I apologize. Item D, no, Title VI. Item D is authorization for Mayor Walter to join other regional mayors in signing a letter of support for the pay increases for both public and private correctional employees in the fiscal year 2020 state budget. Item E is approval of the Temporary Utility Payment Deferman Program for furloughed federal government employees. Item F is ratification of the election of William Bruin as the employee representative on the Town of Florence Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Fire Local Board for a period of four years. Item G is authorization to dispose of town vehicles and equipment that are no longer needed and/or have outlived their useful life. Item H is approval of the February 4th and February 19th, 2019 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item I is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes. On January 17th, 2019, Arts and Culture Commission Meeting Minutes. January 30th, 2019, Historic District Advisory Commission Meeting Minutes. And January 17th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. I would like to have a motion in regards to the Consent Agenda removing item A at this time.
Are you making a motion you want me--
I just would like somebody else to make the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to remove item A.
And approve the rest of Consent Agenda.
And approve the rest of the Consent Agenda.
Second. I'd like to remove item B, though.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, we have a motion to remove item A and B from the Consent Agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, the reason I asked for item A to be removed is council member Hughes is unable to vote on the first item as she was a previous business owner on Main Street. And I believe that is up in June, correct? Okay. So, if nobody has any further questions, I need a motion on item A.
I'll make a motion that we approve item A, as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Councilmember Cortez?
Yeah, so on item B, the ratification to extend a professional service contract for permit support and training with a total contract amount not to exceed $35,000, my question is, how long have we currently had this contract? We're training, right?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember. We've had Ms. Colbrun, Cindy from Colbrun's here since December 3rd, I believe. We had her on, we was able to raise for her help while we had the absentees of our permit techs and the front office staff in the building department. So, she's been here under a $25,000, I believe, number since December 1st, and she's actually, she's exhausted that amount of money right now. We do have a new permit tech in office. However, there was a lot of training that took place with trying to understand how our system works and how the permitting process, because when the exist, the past permit tech left, we didn't have an overlap. So, we were basically handed, this is it, this is how we, you know, here's the problems. So, Cindy from Colbrun's was able to assist and deal with SmartGov and basically receive some information or some training over the phone, just the day-to-day on-the-job process to keep us in process through the permits. Now that Ms. Bean is a permanent, is a permit tech, permit specialist, sorry, we didn't, we don't have an overlap because of the amount of money has ran out from Ms. Colbrun, so now we are here at the same point where we don't have an overlap to help train the new person other than throw her out in the water and say swim. We have found that there's a lot of, in our SmartGov program in the department, a lot of possibilities that could be used to help with customer service, accounting and financing issues that have not been explored previously. We're finding that because we're getting involved in SmartGov, which was never, I guess, was never addressed before. So, what I asked for was an extension of her contract so I could have some overlap with my new employees. We're still missing one employee right now until the 1st of April, which would be our admin assistant. Again, she'll be on on April 1st, but there's no overlap, so again, we're constantly battling this training and processing permitting. It was just a, it was an extension, and what we've done is, in order to stretch the days out, is this is not a everyday, eight-hours-a-day process that we're looking for. I was looking at a, an amount of money that we could use. I can utilize her once or twice a week, like every other day, so that Gloria can receive the best training from her. Basically, she can work the counter. When things come up, the next day, she has the ability to ask this person and pursue it. And so, we could stretch this out. We've actually stretched it out several weeks, working half a day, a half a day, twice a week. She was willing to work with us that way, and again, it's not an eight-hour day. I'm not looking at using the whole $10,000. My point was to have an overlap, so I have some help in the permitting process to keep, continue on with what we're doing. That's what the purpose was it for.
Okay, so then my next follow-up question is going to be, because the exhibit that was provided, the scope of service, there's a couple things. So, what I hear you saying is she's just training you guys on software, but according to this, they're doing plan review, they're doing inspections, so building inspections, plan reviews, they will perform plan reviews to cover one or more of the following disciplines, architectural, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, et cetera, et cetera. They will provide building inspector as requested by the county. The scope of inspection service to be provided will be defined listed below. So, my question is, I think you're telling me that she's training you on the software, but when I look at this exhibit, I feel like they're there because they're doing a job that I'm wondering if we're not staffed for that job.
I believe what, I believe what's happened is you've got two different contracts mixed up. And what I mean by that is that we have Cindy with Colbrun's was, again, we hired her in December to help out in the permitting tech process, processing permits and learning the SmartGov system. What's happened since then is that we were inundated with a bunch of plans with, from Dr. Horton. All of a sudden, with their new plans that came in and said, "Here's, here's 11 sets of plans with the multiple elevations." That was way outside of what myself or my inspector are capable of doing, this amount of plan reviews and dealing with the day-to-day operations in the office. So, we went through-- So we went through a process of how can we contract an outside agency to help out with the, without, with the plan review. This, this idea is a common practice amongst other building departments is to contract outside source to help out with plan review. So what's happened is we were able to put together a process, myself, Mr. Billingsley, our finance department, I apologize.
Sure.
I lost words. To put it where we could contract this out, and then it has a direct bill pay from the con, from the developer to the contractor, so that the money doesn't come out of our account, our budget, to, for the plan review, but we will still get permitting price, permit review prices, the fees, portion of the plan review fee, so we'll still be receiving income off of those plans. It just helps us meet the deadlines that are required for these amount of plans to be reviewed. So that is a separate issue than what I'm asking for, Ms. Colbrun, and the reason why, I'll address how Colbrun got that contract, is we went out to outside procurement to the Pinell County, and they already have a procurement policy for using several other outside agencies. So we were able to present the developer with four, four agencies that are, that are, have passed the, went through the procurement process for Pinell County or Yawapai County, they, we can contract under theirs, so piggyback their contracts. We presented that to the developer, it was up to them to pick who they wanted, and they actually chose Colbrun, that was their outside pick, was not through us at all. They sent us the information, who they chose. At that point, we send them the contract, that this is what you have to do, this is what we're requiring to be sent back to us, and that's, that's the other portion of this contract. So they're actually two separate, even though it turns out to be the same Colbrun.
Let me do my best to translate the information as necessary. So Ms. Colbrun brings a unique, unique skill set to us. She's a certified permit tech. We don't have a certified permit tech. Our new person that has come on board is not a certified permit tech. She was the most qualified person to apply for the position, she requires training. We needed a bridge between our last permit tech and this permit tech, and in addition to that, we wanted her to get deeper into our software package and provide training to our staff, including the person that, that we had planned to hire, that took us longer to hire than, than we thought was gonna hire. We have a set of boilerplate contracts that we use for things, and so when we contract with someone, they come in and we ask them if they have a contract, but oftentimes, we'll take an existing contract that we've used previously and utilize that for the contract with these individuals. So we have done contracts in the past that allowed for more than just permit tech activities. So I'm guessing that's why those other items are in the contract, is because when we had Will Dan, for example, or when we had Stan Tech, for example, they did plan reviews and they did building inspections, et cetera. Ms. Colbrun only does the permit tech duties, and her contract is to do the permit tech duties as, as well as, as training. From what I understand, talking to Lisa, this is the same contract that we signed with Colbrun previously, with the same language. I signed it under my authority up to $24,999. We need her for an additional $10,000, so it's, it's, it's that simple.
I apologize if I made it more, more complicated.
It sounds simple, doesn't it?
Does that answer your question?
Oh, yeah, it answers my question. What concerns, what bothers me is that I have this with this, and if we're not talking about this, then I shouldn't have this because it has nothing to do with this, so when I'm reading it, I'm like, whoa. She's doing more than just training us on some software, and so I'm trying to figure out why it's taking a, you know, what is the, where are we lacking in learning the software? And instead of training the entire staff, why don't we train one or two people? Let them figure it out, and then as new staff comes in, our staff would train those people. Nor, that's how it's always been done in any business that I've worked for, where we've trained staff, is we train a couple pivotal people, and it's usually the supervisor, the head of the department, or something like that, and then they become the expert on that, and then the people become just, occasionally, we have to call and ask a technical question or something. So I've just, yeah, for me, it answers my question. I just, it told me to refer to Exhibit A, and I did, and Exhibit A went into the fact that there, she covers plan reviews, but if those are two different, two different topics, that's okay, I just would prefer that not to even be in my packet then.
So what this, what this does, though, is that this allows for a broader scope, so if the Town of Florence at that time had had the need, it set the limitations on what we could actually go in and contract. So the original contract was assigned, was signed on December 3rd, and it would have allowed for any one of those services that are present. The one we're talking about, and the reason why we're increasing the service, is the second page of Exhibit B, so you're absolutely correct. And after we expend this service, this contract will be retired, basically, for the remainder of the year because we will have expended our not-to-exceed amount. So this company will not be contracted with for any of those services because we will have expended our amount. If, if we signed it on December, or if we signed it July 1 of 2019, and it has a list and it has an amount not to exceed, then it would give the department the freedom of being able to call in an inspector that's necessary, or being able to call in a permit tech if necessary with this company. And it would still be bound to an amount not to exceed, but we're not planning on doing that at this time. So just to explain the wide variety of services versus the amount not to exceed number. At any time that we reach that number, all services stop.
All right, with that, we need a motion.
I motion to approve item B, ratification of, of extended professional service contract with Colbrun for permit support and training with a total contract amount not to exceed $35,000.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item eight, which is our unfinished business. This is resolution number 1690-19. This is discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinell County, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 33, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. At your last meeting, you continued this item because you had some very specific questions of DR Horton, who is the primary applicant in this case. If you like, I can go through this brief presentation again, otherwise, I believe some of the summary from DR Horton was forwarded to you earlier today. We have a representative of DR Horton to answer any additional specific questions you might have.
Has everybody had a chance to read the summary that was sent?
Yes.
Okay. Let me pull it up for you. Could you, actually, could you summarize it for our council, because not everybody has had a chance to access their email today? Thank you very much, I appreciate that. It would be good for public to know the information as well.
Mayor, Members of the Council, Dan Bono with DR Horton. It's good to be back in front of you, I see a lot of familiar faces up there. I'm here to answer any questions. I think that a lot of what was discussed last time had to do with the proximity of the wastewater treatment plant. Unit 33 is adjacent to the plant on the east, and I did, I met with Epcor last week and got a list of, and that's the email that was forwarded to, to you in regards to what they're doing with that plant. Buildout will be a 6 million gallon per day facility. It's currently permitted for 3 million. Right now, it's built out for 1.5. Currently, there's only .85 million gallons per day going to that, and that does include the sewage that is being transferred down from the north, so that is what, again, that's the number from Epcor, and that's the number that they're, have relayed to ADQ. One of the items is the, there's a 350-foot setback, that is from buildings, so it's not from the wall, so they pushed the wall out to the extremities, and then the buildings are obviously set back within that facility. I think some of the other comments had to do with disclosures.
Yes.
DR Horton's no different than Pulte in, in regards to that we have to provide a public report, get it filed with the Department of Real Estate. You'll notice that we've not filed ours yet, or any of the units that we've already been approved. The language will be very similar to what Pulte uses. A lot of the builders use title companies to write the reports, they go through extensive looking at what's in the area, disclosing that it's gonna provide dust, possible smell, could be at any hours of the day, so we try and disclose as much as possible. Beyond the public report, DR Horton does a separate disclosure. Both of these documents are signed by the buyer, so, and to take it one step further, because this is an existing facility, it's readily available to see. Typically, we have to disclose whether it may be a power line or something that's coming in the future, whatever we know is gonna happen on the site. That's not as easy to display or let the residents or buyer know what's coming in. This is an existing facility that is there, it's come, as soon as you come in off of Hunt Highway, it's right in front of you, so it's hard to, hard to miss, but again, we do go through two steps with the public report that's approved by the state and our public, our separate disclosure, both of which are signed by the buyer.
Okay, I did have one question.
Yes.
When you're talking about in the email that was sent out earlier today, like the current average winter flow into the plant is .85 MGDs, does that also take into consideration some of that dumping that's occurring from the plant north coming in and being pumped into that?
Mayor, Members of the Council, yes, it does. So this is a total that's going to the plant as it stands right now, which is from, call it the diversion from Section 11 that's happening to the north. What Anthem is, the plant is built for is the entire buildout of Anthem Merrill Ranch. Obviously, it's, what, about half-built out right now? The reason they put, it's because of the winter, is because of the, call it the snowbird population. There's gonna be, it's gonna be higher in the winter, it's gonna be less in the summer months, but that's currently where it's at. In meeting with ADQ, they have actually measured the sewage, I'm not sure how much detail you wanna get into in that, but those are the numbers they've provided to ADQ, so it's an actual, more so than a theoretical, that's actually hitting the plant right now.
That's great information to know. Mr. Billingsley?
I just wanted to clarify something that Dan Jen just provided, which is, it's not half-built out, it's quarter-built out. There's 1.5 million gallons available in the plant today. The ultimate plan is 6 million gallons, so it's, it's a quarter-built out from where it will be. But as we've discussed before, there's a minimum level of flow that has to go into that plant for it to work effectively. So one of the reasons that they had the forced main from Section 11 down was to put more flow into the plant to help it with its efficiencies.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Yeah, I have a question. This is probably more to Brenton, it is to you, Dan, and by the way, welcome back to us. How do we protect, you know, DR Horton and our citizens in the future if Johnson Utilities does not perform? Do they have a business license that we can revoke or find them in some way? I mean, how, how do we make sure, you know, we can protect our people?
Excellent question, and as you know, we've been very involved from a town's perspective for the last year and a half regarding some, some of the conversations at ADQ and with the Corporation Commission having to do with Johnson Utilities. They are regulated by the Arizona Corporation Commission, and of course, from the EPA, ADQ, ADWR, et cetera, those agencies, so we really don't have much of a say with, with respect to, to those compliance and enforcement duties. However, when it comes to public safety and requirements in our town in terms of licensing, et cetera, we are very much involved, and, and I believe council knows, that meant some correspondence about two months ago with respect to a chlorine leak at that plant, and it will, we will be generating another letter, a letter in the near future from the fire department as, as well on a, on a life safety issue.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions by council? Councilmember Wall?
I think there was one last item on that list that we received earlier about odor. Can you, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't read it, and welcome back, Dan.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Wall. I can read it, I've got it in front of me, I'm not too sure how detailed, because I don't know too much about it, it's an activated carbon odor control system is installed just outside the headworks of the plant.
Okay, I think that was one of the concerns of, of the council, was whether we would be facing the similar problem that the Section 11, the people near the Section 11 plant have had with odor, so I, thank you for reading that, I didn't have it, so hopefully that helps.
Councilmember Cortez?
So what, as Councilwoman Wall said, if you go to where your DR Horton Express homes are that you built down, I don't know the sections, there is a distinct odor. It's not all the time, it's sometimes, and it depends on the temperature and which way the wind's blowing, but that's what we're concerned about, is that I know they're telling you that they're gonna treat this, but if they're telling you they treated it at your last build right there on Hunt Highway, it's not working. And so I, as a resident who lives in Anthem, am very concerned about the odor, but I'm also concerned about future residents as a realtor who are gonna be purchasing DR Horton homes that are in the Johnson Utilities area, that as a builder, you are doing your due diligence to ensure that those residents are going to be protected from gases, spillage. I know that you can't control that company, but I, I'm hoping that you guys have done everything you can to try to make sure that those residents are being protected, and that what they think they're buying is what they're, they're truly buying as far as the infrastructure of that utilities program, because there is no other utility program for us to use in that area. We have Johnson Utilities, and I personally have issues with my water, and so I just, that's my biggest concern, is that what, what has DR Horton done other than just talk to Epcor? Do you bring in your own people to look and just kinda make sure that what they're telling you is accurate? Because, you know, we can all be told one thing, and behind the curtain, something else is happening, so that's where my concern is.
Mayor, Members of the Council, that concern is at the utmost importance for us as well. We're selling a lifestyle. We're, obviously, this is the biggest investment that a family will make, we wanna make sure that they're making it with the right builder, and that would be DR Horton. I'd also like to kinda separate, and I think you alluded to it, the smells from the, the home itself, because it's, like you said, it's not DR Horton that's causing it. Yes, it's based off the location, we are working with Epcor to try and improve the situation as much as possible. I know they're having problems with Section 11. DR Horton has homes in the Section 11 treatment area, so it's very important for us, not only to get Section 11 up and running to its full capacity to serve those residents, but also for the new ones that we're about to bring in to the Anthem community.
I just wanted to point out real quick, thank you for coming as well, but I just wanted to point out real quickly, you keep talking about the documents that you're putting in the closing documents, as well as, that people would obviously see it, and I just wanted to tell you from a resident's perspective, I know I've seen on social media where even people who live in Anthem now, although they see it every day, they had no idea that that was a wastewater treatment plant. And when you have a stack of papers that high to sign, it's probably gonna get lost in the shuffle, so I know, I appreciate you guys doing that and attempting to let, notify the residents. I just hope that in this forum at least, that people are aware that that is going on, and that's what that structure is. So I think that obviously that knowledge, just becoming more of a common knowledge will be beneficial. I wish you guys the best in building in the, in the area, and welcome you to Florence.
Thank you very much, and that's why we put that extra disclosure in there, and it's, and I hear that a lot from people that, okay, there was a ton of documents in front of me, I was signing for an hour, I don't know what I signed. We hear that, but we try and provide, that's why we do the extra disclosure. The other difference a little bit from this one is the proximity from these lots to the treatment plant. Obviously, Hunt Highway separates these lots from most of what's already, well, everything that's been sold in Anthem to date, so it may get lost a little bit in the shuffle for the, I'll call it the people on the east side of Hunt versus the ones that would be up against it, so as you're going in there looking at your lot, when you come in, it's more of a reminder right in front of you. right in front of you.
Oh, one other question, Dan. I don't know if you're aware or not, but I think Councilman Cortez brought this up at the last, you, there is a water pressure problem in Anthem now. Are you aware of that?
D.R. Horton just bought the lots recently. Water pressure, and again, I can put my Pulte hat on because I was with Pulte for the, from the, pretty much the beginning of Anthem. Pressure's been an ongoing problem out here. And we've addressed it with Johnson Utilities a number of times, trying to get, whether it's working them to get the treatment plant or just helping get the pressure increased in the community. It hasn't always been as easy as we would have liked. But now they've got more builders to the table, it's easier to try and put a little more pressure on Johnson Utilities and Epcor in order to help rectify the situation.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much for coming this evening and clarifying some of those items for us. We do appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
With that, we do need a motion regarding Resolution Number 169019.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1690-19.
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're going to move into Item Number 9A, which is new business. Resolution Number 1691-19. This is discussion approval disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, vacating, abandoning, and transferring title to the right-of-way for a portion of the North Park Street adjacent to the abutting property owners located at 157 North Park Street West, and approving and accepting the compensation paid by the abutting property owners and other consideration for the right-of-way. Mr. Chris Alice?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I, I'll try to keep this focused and rather simple. There are a lot of structures within the Town of Florence and in the downtown area that were built within the town's right-of-way. And due to that, we, I approved an agreement a while back on 76 North Center Street, what's often referred to as the Lyons Agreement, for something very similar to this. This gentleman had a piece of property where his wall and his shed, portions of the property extended into the Town of Florence's right-of-way. When he tore that down, and we were not condemning him at that time in any shape, way, or form, he was existing, it was a existing structure. When it was taken down and he wanted to rebuild it, as part of the permitting process, we knowingly could not permit a structure rebuilt within the town right-of-way. So we've gone through the process of having him do a survey and acquire the additional right-of-way to build his shed in the, in his, essentially his backyard and abandon the right of way that was in his property. At some point, hopefully in the coming years, we'll be looking at bigger projects where we abandon large chunks of right-of-way along the street all at one time. But until that time comes, these will be handled on a one-by-one basis as the Building Safety Department catches these items being permitted. But we will not be enforcing structures that are in the right-of-way.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there any questions regarding this item? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1691-18.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item B is discussion approval disapproval to adopt the policy guidelines and application procedures for the establishment of community facilities districts. Mr. Joe Jarvis?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Back in November 19th of 2007, the, the mayor and council of the Town of Florence adopted the policy guidelines and application procedures for the establishment of new community facility districts. Since 2007, the state statutes and guidelines for managing community facility districts have changed. It is now time for us to consider an adoption of a new policy, excuse me, an updated of the existing policy. This policy only applies to new entities that request to be considered community facility district. So it will not impact our two current community facility districts that are mainly impacting the Pulte developer. Some of the changes that you have noticed, as you read through the policy, is the, right now, CFD1 and CFD2 board members are you, the seven of you. However, because of the change in statutes, if a new district were created, there'd be two additional members that would be added to the board. They would not be council members, they would be, if I remember correctly, members of the developer, people that were selected by the developer. That is a significant change. Some of the other changes that are incorporated into this policy have to do with the fees that the developer has to pay to the town in order for us to process their application. This evening, as staff was preparing this agenda item, we went back and forth as to considering who had to review and approve this policy. And it was determined, based upon conversations with our legal counsel, that the only entity that needs to review and approve this policy is you, the town council. So some of the documentation shows references to CFD1 and CFD2. That has been amended. It is only going to be reviewed and approved by you, the town council. And if approved, it would be signed off by the mayor of the Town of Florence and the staff, the clerk, the attorney, but none of the district employees.
Questions for Joe, because I know, you know, we always have questions, especially when there's a change. So Councilmember Wall, would you like to begin?
I have a question about Item 1.9 in Article 1. That's like one big long sentence, the entire section. And if I read it correctly, it sounds as though only 25 cents of every dollar of debt is to be spent on the infrastructure improvements. Is that correct?
So staff also had that question. We had been reviewing this policy with our legal counsel for the CFDs, which is Greenberg, Toreg, or Mike Cafiso and Paul Gales. We reviewed that specifically with them and rely on their expertise because they're familiar with these CFDs and work with other entities. They relay to us that this is the wording that other entities like Peoria or Buckeye or Goodyear are adopting. We felt that the number was pretty low, but they said that is the standard in, in the state. So we were relying on that standard.
So where does the other 75 cents go?
That's a great question.
The paragraph says at least 25 cents of $1, at least. So what that says is that when we go in and we do our in administrative fee and everything, that it has to be at least 25 cents of every do, every dollar spent in the CFD. So it's like an encumbrance of all. It's not a minimum number.
It's not a maximum number.
It's not a maximum number, it's a minimum number.
It, it just seems like an awful small number to allow to be spent, and the other 75 cents is, is straight debt.
Well, think of it the other direction. At least 25 cents. It could be a dollar. It's, think, think of it in terms of that language. So there will be administrative fees, there will be costs associated with going to the bond market. But at least 25% of that is going to go to the infrastructure. It may be 85%, it might be 95%. The other thing that we're covering there is our ability to buy down the rate when we go to the market as well. So sometimes we pay points when we go to the market to get a, get a lower rate. And so that would be made up as a, a part of that difference as well. But can, make sure you concentrate on at least, because that's the key, key wording.
I understand. Thank you.
And Councilmember Wall, that's the same question I, I also had in regards to 1.9. And I want to know where that number came from.
So as Joe mentioned a second ago, the laws are continually changing, the rules are continually changing. And we underwent a very large change from, from the legislative perspective two years ago. And we had a timeframe by which we were supposed to modify our rules to, to be able to go forward. So similar to what the league does in terms of giving us model ordinances or model policies, the bond attorneys in, around the state, they all get together and they do model policies as well. And so this is the current model policy for the state of Arizona that people are being encouraged to adopt. And as Joe said, a number of entities have adopted it recently. I believe that Penal County has recently adopted a derivation of this as well. So we utilize that advice from our bond attorneys and want to be completely up to date with the statutes.
Councilmember Hughes?
With that same question, how much, what's the formula for buying down? How much of that dollar would you, would you utilize to buy down a bond?
So that is a very interesting question. It depends on each tranche, as we call it, or each time we go to the market. So sometime, well, it depends a lot on the Fed rate and the bond market. So it fluctuates every time we go to, to the street. The second thing that is part of that is what our individual bond rating is. So at certain times down, in the past, not only have we bought points on a loan, and you can do the same thing on, when, or points on a bond sale, you can do the same thing when you're buying a loan for your house or contracting for a loan. The other part of that is twice since I've been here, we've actually gone to a rating agency to have our bond rating updated, hoping that we could get a competitive advantage in terms of a bond rating. So if you have an exceptionally small offering, and we understand at that time whatever our bond rating is, which I think we're triple B minus now, Joe, is that right? I think, I think we have a triple B minus bond rating. You do a cost benefit analysis to determine if the money you pay down is going to benefit adverse to the cost. So I, I know on one bond deal we did, we were able to buy, I believe, a triple B rating for a certain dollar amount. So let's say that we were going to spend $10 to, to get that triple B rating, and that could have saved us $100. So that's the type of investment that you would make because it met the cost benefit threshold. Whereas if you were going to buy, buy it by $10 and only receive $8 benefit, then you wouldn't do that. But it's each transaction where that, where that conversation and that analysis takes place.
I don't mean to go on a rabbit trail, but why do we have a low rating?
Each entity has a, a rating. And so just like you for your credit rating, each of us as public entities have a rating for our finances based on a review by an independent entity. Who did we use last time?
Last time we had S&amp;P evaluate us.
S&amp;P do our rating.
If you would have, if you would like to, you're welcome to review the analysis that they completed. I don't have it memorized, so I don't have specifics as to why we had such a lower rating.
It's not a low rating. It's, we have increased our bond rating several times since we started. And it has to do with the health of our finances, how much debt that we carry on the books, what type of debt that is, very much the way that credit ratings are done for individuals. So every time that we can, we try to do deals, and keep in mind, CFDs are different. But from a town's perspective, when we try to do a deal, we try to use the state's rating, the state of Arizona, because it's significantly higher than ours. For the CFDs, we have to use our rating.
Thank you. Question. How does this document impact current CFDs, if at all?
It doesn't. This is for creation of new CFDs.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that clarifying point, because I know that's something that would have come out. Are there any other questions from council? All right. I thank you for your thorough answers. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the policy guidelines and application procedures for the establishment of community facilities districts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The time is 6:05 PM. I am going to depart from our new business, leaving off, and we will return back to Item C. And I'm going to return back to Item 6, under Public Hearings and Presentations, starting with Item A, which is the public hearing on the town's development impact fees and notice of intent to increase fees and first reading of Ordinance Number 672-19. This is an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, amending Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 150, amending Sections 150-280, C, D, G, H, and K, adopting new impact fees pursuant to assumption, an infrastructure improvement plan adopted on January 7th, 2019, by approving Resolution Number 1685-19. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor and council, tonight we had Carson Bias give a work session on the impact fees. The council has adopted the resolution which adopted the plan. We did publish in the paper pursuant to AR State statutes that we would have the work session and at this, or have the public hearing. And at this time, we would ask that you open the public hearing and receive any comment to the citizens. Second reading of this item will come back on May 7th, and the effective date, if, if adopted on May 7th, will be August 1st.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anybody from the public at this time that would like to come up and ask any questions or voice any concerns? Closing the public hearing. Thank you very much. Again, this will come again before us on May 7th. And if voted in favor at that time, it would remain in effect starting August 1st. Item B is a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on rezoning from neighborhood office to highway business, B2, for 470, 470 South Main Street, Florence, Arizona, APN 202-09-0010. And first reading of Ordinance Number 671-19. An ordinance of the Town of Florence, Penal County, Arizona, approving the highway business commercial B2 zone change located at 470 South Main Street, APN 202-09-0010. And this is PZ-19-15. Mr. Larry Harmer?
Mayor, council, good evening again. Bringing forward to you a positive recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, who regionally held their public hearing, and forwarded, as I said, a positive recommendation. Very quickly, property located at 470 South Main Street. This is a southwest corner of Main and 20th Street. It's also designated as Loop Road or Loop Highway 79, or Business Loop, if you will. It's approximately 20% of an acre. Go the right direction here. Again, showing the location and the size of the lot. Configuration currently, it's, there's one structure with three suites. Two of those suites are vacant currently. The third suite is currently occupied by a barber shop, Curly Mo's. Previously, there was a training facility in the front suite closest to Main Street that has since been vacated. We've complied with state law as well as our own code on forms of outreach. Actually, we exceeded the standard requirements. We have mailed notices to those within 300 feet. Our, the state law requires 150-foot notification. We did exceed in that area. Advertisement and posted in local newspaper, was done so in February. Public notice sign is on the site and has been prior to the planning commission's hearing. So we held a citizen review meeting within community development on February 28th. Total attendance outside of the applicant and staff was zero. Planning Commission held their public hearing on March 7th, and as I stated, has forwarded a positive recommendation. Their findings is the proposed rezoning is consistent with the 2020 general plan, and the rezoning should facilitate and assist in the ongoing revitalization redevelopment efforts along all of Main Street. efforts along all of Main Street. Planning commission recommends approval ultimately with the development subject site being in conformance with all applicable codes and ordinances. The property owners agree to waive claims of diminution in value pursuant to Proposition 207, which, when executed, will be added as an attachment to the ordinance itself prior to recordation, and any additional conditions deemed necessary by the council. Be happy to try to answer any questions. The applicant himself is, under the weather, did let us know earlier today he would not be in attendance. He will try to be here for the second hearing and second reading.
I appreciate that, you letting us know and the applicant communicating with you. Mr. Billingsley, did you want to add something?
I just wanted to provide one little piece of clarification for those folks out there in TV land or perhaps on the dais that who have some understanding, training, and education in planning and zoning, because they're probably thinking, how is this not spot zoning to just rezone one individual parcel? Well, it's not spot zoning under the law in this case because this parcel is inconsistent from the zoning on the remainder of that corridor and is inconsistent with the intent of our special planning areas. So it is not spot zoning.
And we did outline that in the staff report. I apologize for not bringing it up in the presentation.
No worries. I did notice that, so thank you. And thank you for clarifying it. Council, do you have any questions? Okay, well, this is going to open up for public hearing, so at this time, I'm opening up this agenda item. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, I am closing call to the, oh my goodness, I'm closing this public hearing. Thank you. Item C is a public hearing on an application received from Leslie Bentley, Sun City Anthem at Merrill Ranch, for a Class A bingo license located at 3925 North Sun City Boulevard, Florence, Arizona, for council recommendation and approval or disapproval of said license.
Mayor and members of council, the clerk's office received an application for a Class A bingo license for Sun City Anthem. The clerk's office is required to hold a public hearing within 45 days. That would be tonight. And after we hold a public hearing, staff would recommend that council forward an application for approval for said license.
At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing regarding this application. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak at this time? Counsel?
What about Parkside?
At this time, the town of Florence has not received an application from Parkside. We have only received an application from Sun City Anthem. It is part of the municipal government's job to receive the applications and also to receive the fee for the application for the state of Arizona, as well as the town of Florence. We received both fees. We hold our public hearing. We have council issue of recommendation, and we reforward the recommendation onto the state.
I'm wondering how many other organizations that we have in town that have bingo that don't know that this is a state law?
Anytime the town of Florence finds out that they do have bingo, we try to contact the agency to make sure that they have a license. I just talked to Florence Gardens today and was told they do have a license. And we reach out to them if we find out that they're actively doing bingo there. License, once you get a bingo license, there's not a renewal type of process in place, so they can be very old bingo license.
Good.
And when you contact the state, I did contact the state to ask them for a list of bingo license that were in the town of Florence city limits, and the state said that we were not to receive that information. So all we are is a recommending body, we're not an authority body.
Thank you.
So were they asked to apply for a bingo license because they've offered bingo, it's part of their lifestyle?
They offer bingo as part of their lifestyle. A member of the community asked them, do you have a bingo license? They came in to verify that you're in fact required to have a bingo license. The state is very clear for a Title A bingo license, any nonprofit can basically apply for the bingo license and go through a fundraising-type activity where they are allowed to raise funds through bingo activities.
And then what if it's a school?
I tried to find out if they had a bingo license, but again, I could not find out through the state.
But is the school, is a school required to have a bingo license if they hold bingo?
I would have to research for the school. If somebody's having a bingo license and say they're giving out prizes and not, then they're not required to. If you're going in and you're receiving groceries and not prizes that are not a monetary value, you're not required to have a bingo license. It's a game. If you're receiving, if it's a fundraising activity and the bingo license is taking a share and using it to raise funds, then you do require to have a bingo license. Anyone who's out there that's doing bingo right now, we suggest that they contact the town of Florence clerk's office. We'd be happy to walk through the process with them as to what type of bingo license they should get and work with them to get that done. And happy to bring that forward to you for future approvals.
Okay, any additional questions before I close the public hearing? Or comments?
Hopefully, their person will maybe attend the next meeting.
There is no next meeting. This is for approval.
This is for very specific?
This is for Sun City Anthem.
Yes. Okay.
I have one more quick question. Does it carry with the individual or does it carry with the location?
If you look at the application, it goes through and it talks about Sun City Anthem at Merrill Ranch at the location for Sun City Anthem.
Okay, are there any other questions, comments, concerns? Closing the public hearing. At this time, we need a recommendation for approval or disapproval of the said license. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the Sun City Anthem at Merrill Ranch for a Class A bingo license located at 3925 North Sun City Boulevard, Florence, Arizona, and for council recommendation for approval and dis, for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is item D, which is a proclamation declaring April 21, 2019, as Power Talk 21 Teen alcohol use kills more than 4,700 people each year, more than all illicit drugs combined. We received an email as a council asking us if we would bring forward this proclamation. Every conversation is a chance to save a life, a son or daughter, mother or father, or family or friend. This April, MADD is hosting Power of Parents workshops across the state to empower parents to talk early and talk often with children about the dangers of underage drinking and to never ride with a drinking driver. With us this evening, we have Mr. Jason Frazier, and he is the State Executive Director of MAG. And prior to reading the proclamation, I would like to welcome you up to the podium to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. It's always an honor to speak to the different towns and cities that we work with or hope to work with. You said it best, we lose far too many teens across the country. It is something that, when we're asked about what Mothers Against Drunk Driving does, a lot of times, we don't think about the teens. We think about just drivers getting behind the wheel, impaired, and the travesty and tragic circumstances that that can have. And it's all too much of a reality that, like you said, 4,700 teens lose their lives every year. It seems like every time we turn on the news, at some point, colleges around the country, people drink too much. It's just tragedy all across the world and our country. Some other stats, if you'll indulge me, that I would like to share with everybody, why this is such an important day for all of us and that we do it countrywide, but why we really want to get this out in Arizona more than ever and have a lot of success in our hope, every single city that we have in Arizona. Is teens who start drinking before the age of 15 are six times more likely to develop severe alcohol problems and dependence later on in life? And that's just a massive problem that's going to cost our communities. We can't even calculate how much that's going to cost. And it also puts us into a position where every single day, me personally and my advocates that work for me, deal with families that have lost loved ones due to impaired driving. And this is just setting that roadmap ahead for devastation and just severe consequences that if we fight this in the beginning, we can avoid. And the other alarming statistic is that one in four teens that are involved in car crashes, one in four are alcohol-related. And when we look at that, we've seen everything from 20 years old all the way down to, believe it or not, 13 years old. The youngest that I've seen personally at one of our victim impact panels that was not behind a wheel but that had started drinking was eight years old. And we think, how can that happen? And really, it is how the culture works. A lot of us, it's, hey, do you want to take a sip of my beer? And one of the frequent phrases we use is, you know, where do you find the beer behind the milk? So I'm honored that you are considering making this a proclamation for this day. It is much more than just a day to talk about underage drinking to our teens. It's literally saving lives. And we can't quantify how many lives we save. When I speak to law enforcement and first responders, I always tell them that there's not a bar graph or chart that will ever show how many lives they are truly saving when they stop impaired drivers or when they're out there on their saturation patrols and all those other different areas. There's never something we can quantify this by. But by us declaring this day as Power Talk 21 Day across the country, and again, what I really care about is what's near and dear to me, which is Arizona. When we're out there teaching teens and reaching the parents and having them give this lifesaving message, we are going to save lives in our community, and that is the most important piece. So I really am honored that you've let me come to address the council, Madam Mayor. I really am honored by that, and I look forward to working with the city of Florence. They are a wonderful partner of ours. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
I do want to let you know that many councilmembers have come forward, as well when you're, Beverly is her name, when she sent out the email. You have our council's support on this in regards to moving forward with the proclamation. We have the actual proclamation here and ready, so what we're going to do is read it into record, and then we can go down and we'll take a picture with you as well.
That is wonderful. I really appreciate that.
Should we want to make a motion?
This isn't a voted on item.
Recommended motion?
I apologize if I'm wrong. Ms. Garcia, am I correct in understanding that we do not need to vote on it? Because it says not applicable.
It is a proclamation of, and we don't vote on those, but the form does say action, so I apologize for that. The agenda does not show action, it shows the issuance.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Absolutely. I have four adult children who were teenagers and drivers at one time, and we had each of them, before they got their licenses, sign a contract that if they were ever in a situation where alcohol was present or they had imbibed in some way or form and didn't want to drive themselves, that they would call us. Does your organization still do that or promote that?
We absolutely do. MADD has been in a very interesting time. You know, we have a 97% name recognition, and there was a time where MADD was really involved in the schools, and they got away from that a little bit. I personally have been with MADD for nine years, and I started as a victim advocate. But yes, we are absolutely back into that realm, and it is wonderful that you brought that up. A lot of teens where that really goes into play in our Power Talk 21 and Power, we actually have two programs called Power of Youth and Power of Parents. That is absolutely discussed and those contracts are available because one thing that we started seeing is teens were so embarrassed and they would rather take the risk of getting home, whether it was driving impaired themselves or what's even, not, I shouldn't say worse, but what we've seen, so many countless tragedies, is they thought, well, I have a trusted friend. They would never put me in harm's way. And so that's when they would get, well, you drive, you have the car, and then tragedy would strike. So yes, we do have those contracts, and that is all included within this particular program. It's a wonderful, wonderful program that, again, we shout it from the mountaintops and we get into the schools, every single place we can possibly get into.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And we do an amazing program. I know right before prom, between our fire department, our police, in regards to educating the youth on the dangers of drinking and driving, and we partner with an insurance company as well as PCSO, who brings us a total vehicle, and they act out the whole scenario.
Absolutely, it's wonderful. That's wonderful, and we would love to be involved with that. So absolutely, anything that we could do.
Well, our fire chief and our police chief are right over there afterwards if you'd like to speak with them.
Absolutely.
Okay, our proclamation states, Power Talk 21 Day, April 21, 2019, whereas the town of Florence, Arizona, recognizes the importance of parents talking with their children about alcohol in order to reduce the risks and dangers posed to children and communities. And whereas high school students who use alcohol or other substances are five times more likely to drop out of school or believe good grades are not important. And whereas 27% of middle school students try alcohol before graduating from eighth grade, significantly increasing the risk that they will develop alcohol problems later in life. And whereas teen alcohol use kills 4,700 people each year, more than all other illegal drugs combined. Whereas the majority of kids say their parents are their primary influence when it comes to decisions about drinking alcohol. Whereas Power Talk 21 Day, started by Mothers Against Drunk Driving in 2011, is established on April 21 to encourage parents and caregivers to embrace their important role in influencing America's youth and their decisions about drinking alcohol. And whereas to equip parents to talk with their teens about alcohol, MADD, Arizona, throughout the month of April 2019, will host Power of Parents workshops to give parents the tools to effectively talk with their children about alcohol to protect them. And whereas I urge all citizens to join the local and national efforts to raise awareness of the importance of parents and children talking together about alcohol to reduce the risks and dangers posed to children and communities. Now therefore, I terror Walter, Mayor of the town of Florence, do hereby proclaim April 21, 2019, to be Power Talk 21 Day. So at this time, can we all meet there? And if the fire chief and police chief want to join us as well, you're an integral part of this.[1709.53] you're an integral part of this. All right. So we are going to loop back over to item 9C. Hang on, I apologize. No, I'm so sorry, Ben, please come back. Item E is Presentation on Florence Alerts and Public Emergency Notification.
Talk about a walk of shame, my goodness.
I'm so sorry, it was, it's me.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We wanted to come before you tonight. And obviously, we had a discussion, I believe, at our last council meeting about the Everbridge system, the Penal County Emergency Notification System, that the town is now authorized to use and has sent out a, I guess, a first trial balloon to see how it goes. And so we're working on continuing to train our staff on how to send out the alerts, formatting, I guess, prepackaged messages so it makes it a little easier for our staff. There are literally hundreds of different settings that we can use and apply when there are water outages or anything from oil spills to any sort of mass casualty-type event. We're working on setting some of those things up so that as our dispatchers get those calls, they can quickly send out notifications and make the public aware of any type of situation that may affect them. What we wanted to do today is kind of go over what it looks like when people register for the system, hopefully to make it easier for them and also to encourage them to sign up for these alerts. It's not going to be an obtrusive thing where they get 20 text messages or emails. We're going to keep it strictly to emergencies and things that we think will affect the general public. So really easily, you can get there either by searching for the Penal Emergency Notification System and go through the Penal County website. But we also set up a tiny URL. So it's just tinyurl.com/FlorenceAlerts. You can go there, it'll take you right to the page that you see on the bottom right. And all you'll do is go in there, and if you look at the very bottom, it says, "Don't have an account? Sign up." You click that. And remember your username and password in case you want to go back in there and modify the alerts in the future. You'll go and create a username, put your first and last name in there, create a password, a security question, which may be, for example, your maternal grandmother's maiden name is the one that was selected here on this example. Put in the registration email. Then it takes you to the next slide, which shows the priority of notifications that you receive. So you can put in anywhere from one to seven different ways to be contacted when these emergencies occur. They could be via cellphone, or it could be via email, work email, personal email, et cetera. And so then at the very bottom, you'll see where there's a little circle on there. I know it's a little tough to see. But you can change the priority of which device or which method you receive first. And that's important because when these alerts get sent out, they'll start with that first priority. So if, for example, I use my cellphone, my personal cellphone, as my number-one priority, and that alert goes out, I'll get a phone call on my personal cellphone that says, "There's a water break at, you know, let's say, Butte and Maine." And then, "Please press 1 to confirm." So I would press 1 to confirm. If I do not press 1 to confirm, then the system automatically moves down to my second preference. So if my second preference is email, it would then send me an email saying, "There's a water outage or a water break at Maine and Butte. Please reply yes to confirm." And then I'd reply yes on my email. And then it would go through the process like that. And so this is where you set those priorities and determine which you'd like to be receiving first, second, third, et cetera. Then as you register, it's important to put your location. And you can put, for example, you work at Town Hall. And so you may register that as an address. And you may go on and say, "This is where I live," and you register that address. And you go and say you want your husband to receive those alerts. You'd put, "Hey, this is where my husband lives," et cetera, et cetera. So you go and put those different locations in there. And then you confirm where those locations are on a map. So the reason I show this one, for some reason, when we type in Town Hall, it puts it on top of the fire station. We may not think that's that big of a deal, right? But you kind of have to drag the pin and put it over Town Hall. The reason that getting that location correct is so important is because when we send out the notifications, we physically draw a circle around an affected area or a polygon or some shape over an affected area. So if that is in the wrong location, you may get a notification that may not apply, or you may not get a notification that actually does apply. And so it's very critical that you're making sure that those locations are in the accurate spot. And then finally, in terms of subscription, you can go in there and you'll see Town of Florence is an option. You'll just select all of those automatically. If you click the top one, it will fill the checkboxes for all the remaining ones for the Town of Florence. Then you'll get kind of a review for all the different things. And you'll see on the right-hand side that you have subscribed or you will be subscribing to all those different things for the Penal County. You click finish. And you're good. So that's obviously a quick overview, wanted to provide that. But also wanted to inform you of how we intend to continue to promote this, not just through Facebook and utility bills at Town Hall, but we also plan on developing a flyer, maybe a one-to-two-page front and back type of thing that we can use with our police officers who can hand them out around town. They have volunteered to do that, knowing that this is obviously something that will be important for our community into the future to receive those notifications. So obviously, still early stages of this process, but great kudos to our public safety directors, the staff of those public safety agencies as well, and our partners that have brought this great tool to Town of Florence. Is that happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
Is this also going to be shared with the chamber so that they're, this out to?
Absolutely, great idea. Yeah, we're happy to share with anyone and everyone. We want as many people signed up as possible because the more people we have signed up, the more effective the notifications are.
Prior to this, there seemed to be a gap in the amount of people that had signed up and how many were getting the notifications. Has that been rectified?
No, to this point, and that will be the important part of the registration. To this point, the system has relied on white pages and yellow pages information. So for example, if a business has a listing in the wider yellow pages, yellow pages, I guess, for business, they might be registered in there. But the most effective way is certainly going to be through that registration because you can put in not just the one number that may be listed in the yellow pages, but maybe that owner could put in a secondary number, an email, a work line that will make it more effective so that if there's that emergency, they're surely getting that contact.
When you put a business license in, are they going to put this on the form that someone fills out for doing business in Town of Florence? That's a good idea.
We haven't talked about that, but maybe we could have that as a consideration. Yeah, I don't know. If we could put it in as a line on the business form, business license form, that they could automatically be enrolled in the Penn system. We could maybe have a secondary form that they could fill out as well, that they could enroll.
Thank you. Mr. Billingsley?
Yeah, a couple of things. Ben touched on one of them that I was going to touch on, which was Councilmember Cortez asked me at the last meeting if this could be set up similar to reverse 911. Two answers to that question. Number one is, it's not reverse 911 because we could be doing notifications that are not truly emergencies in the grand scheme of things. The school district is a perfect example. I didn't get a choice on whether to enroll or not, but I get, I don't know, sometimes 5, 10, 15 messages in a week. And they get really annoying telling me about different things. And we don't really want to annoy people. So we're going to be very mindful of how we provide information. But where there is parity with reverse 911 is, last time we showed the map, I think there was 687 people in the area that we selected last time. And Ben just shared this, that's from the yellow pages and the white pages. So if you have a business that's in the phone book, you're going to get notified. And we have proof that people were notified just based on the fact that they have a phone number in the local directories. There wasn't a lot of success regarding folks replying that they acknowledged it, but there are a lot of folks that are enrolled inadvertently, let me just say. And then secondarily, our police chief has offered, thank you, Dan, that we're going to produce a one-pager that assists people in enrollment. And as an additional effort, Dan is going to send out officers when they're on shift in the beats to businesses and hand them a sheet and inform them of what the Penns is. The additive benefit there is folks getting comfortable talking to and meeting our officers that are in those individual beats.
I have a question. Me and Kristen both have questions.
Okay.
I just had a question. You said that businesses were automatically enrolled based on the telephone number that was provided in the phone book. Do you think, well, I guess, two things with that. Do you think that some of the reason that they didn't respond is because the automated, like, when they call some of those telephone numbers, you get an automated message right away? So if they were being told the message, obviously, they wouldn't respond.
Correct. We think it's message machines, number one, and landlines, number two, that are the challenge, yeah.
So then, also, if that business decides to enroll, does it unenroll that other phone number automatically? Or is that something that we'd have to update in the system? My concerns with that is if, say, a business owner has their cellphone, and that's the one they use for true emergencies, that they'd like to be contacted. When they enroll online, will that business telephone number that was in the phone book be disconnected off of there so they're not getting dual alerts? Or is there a way for them to have that removed?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Larson. We have, I guess, an ability to not send it to the yellow pages and white pages numbers. I would say that it's probably best that we continue to send it to those numbers even as we continue to enroll. But if, for example, you know, a business has, a business owner goes in and registers themselves, and they put that same number on there, it's only going to get called once, if it's on the priority. And so I guess there's kind of a side benefit. If they do register, that maybe they'll, that'll be covered under their own registration. But I would say we'd probably not take off that white pages and yellow pages option just because we don't know who has registered and who hasn't.
So when you register, though, I guess, my question or concern was is if there's dual ownership for a phone number? If they can only register that phone number one time? Or if they'd be called multiple times, all of those type of things?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure if it'll be called twice. For example, if they're registered through the yellow pages and through their personal thing. But again, if their priority for number one is their personal cellphone and they respond yes, they're not going to get called on the same number twice, I guess, is what I would say.
Thank you.
So my question is, all right, I totally just spaced out. I had it. So my question is, so if I don't live in the particular area, but I want to be notified, am I able to select that I just, you know, any type of notification? And then my second question would be, for example, businesses, you said it's going to call in a priority level. If one answers and acknowledges, let's say, the person who answers that is the business owner, but not necessarily like the manager or the person that's going to be there or might actually need to get the message sooner, is it, are you able to still have it maybe call two numbers so that two people are considered like priority on the list? It'll notify both of them? Even if one of them went ahead and confirmed it, it would still call the second one?
A couple of things. What I would recommend in that type of thing, that type of a situation where you want multiple responses, I may fill out, let's say, for example, I'm Taco Bell, and I've got three managers depending on shifts. I may register Taco Bell three times and say, here, not necessarily register, but as you add the different locations and the different priority numbers, you can play around with those settings. But, you know, I would say that you certainly have an ability to register, going back to your first question, for an area that you don't live there or work there, you choose a location when you sign up. And so if you look at the screen, what we've got up there is the My Locations. If you just want to put in there Florence so that you're sure that you're tagged in all of those areas, then you can do that. You can register for whichever areas you want. And then anything that hits in that particular location, you'd receive those alerts. So you don't necessarily have to be a resident. You don't necessarily have to be an employee in somewhere within the town limits. If you're interested, you can register for that location.
And can you register more than one location? So I could register my residence and my business?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, that was my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wall?
What, whose database for white pages and yellow pages is being used? Because I get multiple phone books in my driveway that go into recycling immediately. And there are a lot of sources for phone numbers. What sources are we using?
We take exactly what Everbridge provides us. So Everbridge is the, I guess, master contract for this platform. They gather data on white pages and yellow pages. One thing I'd also be remiss, along those same lines, in terms of our contact, we have an ability that we haven't activated yet. We need some additional training on this and additional authorization. But even if you do not have an ability to register or if you haven't registered on this process in the past, we can, through the system, send an alert to every single cellphone that is within that predefined area. So we have to gain access to that still. But if there's, you know, an event, let's say Country Thunder, for example, we could send a text message or an alert out to the whole area of Country Thunder to ping all cellphones in that area. You can do that through the system. It's very powerful, but that obviously requires additional security steps because if you don't, then you end up with things like happened in Hawaii a couple of years ago where they send a test alert out saying there's a nuclear missile coming to Hawaii. And so they certainly have, we certainly have certain protocols and security measures that we have to hit in order to do that. But that is an option through this platform, something that we'd go through Penal County to authorize. But we have that ability as well.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you bringing that up to us for that presentation. Now we will go over to item 9C, which is the discussion approval/disapproval to enter into a contract with Cactus Asphalt Division of Cactus Transport, Inc. using the cooperative contract through Penal County JOC Contract Number 173923 Asphalt Maintenance and Repair Services, which includes the application of chip seal binder, polymer modified asphalt rubber and fog seal binder for pavement preservation treatment for the Town of Florence CIP T-69 Pavement Preservation Project in an amount not to exceed $103,424.4. Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Partway through the year, it became evident that we were not going to expend all of our funds in certain projects that we were lucky enough to get the majority of it completed last fiscal year. So we had a lot of carryover from the previous year, and we had that budgetary authority. So over the next few meetings, we'll be taking multiple items to council from Cactus Asphalt, from regional paving. There'll be numerous, numerous ones in there. So this is the first one tonight. And again, this is a technology that we've been using for multiple years here. And this is used in the downtown area throughout Florence to kind of patch the roads that have since passed their prime to apply like an HA5 product or a MicroSeal project. Those technologies would not be applicable for these types of roads. So for the majority of them, that will be this area. There are some roads in Florence Gardens that we'll be doing, including a often-asked-about road in DeSoto that finally, this year, we were able to ascertain that that is actually a town road. So that's part of this project as well. And that's something they've been asking for a little bit. It just took us a while to get all the documents and checked out. So they provide us with a legal description and exhibit showing that the town, and we've been able to verify independently that that was. been able to verify independently that that was transferred to us. So, we're taking care of that project as well.
All right. Any Members of Council have any questions regarding this agenda item? Councilmember Larson?
I apologize. I've looked through this like five times and I'm still not seeing it, so I apologize if I missed it. But I am, when I'm looking through this, the background discussion, slash discussion, oh my goodness, it says the surface, the surfaces of various locations throughout Florence are worn and need a asphalt preservation. And then it refers to Exhibit 6. When I look through this, I couldn't find Exhibit 6, but I did find Exhibit 5, which only showed a segment of Hunt Highway. So, it led me to believe that this was talking about different various areas, but I'm only seeing one image. Also, in the contract, which is page one of the contract that's for the Town of Florence, it says the scope of work and it references Exhibit 3. Again, I couldn't find Exhibit 3. So, I don't know if I'm missing the images and/or if I just flat out didn't see them. But could you tell me about that scope of work or what items are on that list?
I have the same question.
Unfortunately, the exhibit is missing. Going over it here, we had multiple maps made. I don't think that we'd be able to get them very easily at this point. There are various roads throughout, like I said, the downtown area. I'm drawing a blank as to which ones those would be. And then again, DeSoto and Florence Gardens. It's probably a series of four or five roads that are high up on the priority list.
Is this segment of Hunt Highway included in?
No, no, no. Hunt Highway would not be that.
Okay, because that's what I'm looking at.
I agree. And like I said, there's definitely a mistake in the exhibits, and I'm sure it's my fault. I'm sure it's not the clerk's office. We did not put the right maps or did not send the right maps. As I was saying a minute ago, unfortunately, we have multiple paving projects through regional and through Cactus Asphalt, and the wrong exhibit made it into this one here.
Okay.
Is there any problem with tabling this or you can get this updated? I mean, is this an emergency thing that we need to get done?
There is. Unfortunately, we do have this project already scheduled. I...
When is it scheduled for? Because we have a work session on the 25th and we can post a special meeting prior to that work session for approval.
Ultimately, Mayor, this is my fault. Let's table the item, and if for some reason we have to bump the schedule, and if it has to wait till July, it has to wait till July. I don't know if we have enough freedom in the gaps because these are programmed out far in advance. And if this is a mistake that we can't overcome, we can just table it and, like I said.
Do you, is there a way? I know at one point we had talked about electronic map that you could pull up on the website. Is there anything we could do like that where we could pull that up real quick and put it on the projector and be able to look at some of the projects?
So, I have a couple of answers for you. Number one, we can send out the map to council tomorrow. Number two, to clarify what Chris said, so these contractors that do this kind of work, they do it in a supply chain kind of way. So, they schedule out like six months where they're going to travel because they have to travel with all their equipment, the distributor trucks, the chip spreaders, et cetera. So, if they have it scheduled, it's not as simple as just reschedule us two weeks from now or just reschedule us a month from now because they're already booked for the remainder of the year. So, when he says, "We can wait and do it in June and do the work in July," that would be a disservice to those streets. It's unfortunate, but we can't pull up a map either because this is a specific graphic, it sounds like, that Chris's department provided for those individual projects. $100,000 is not a lot of money in chip seal, so they're going to be very small projects. And I don't know if, you said it right, I think it's South Dakota that is one of the primaries here, which we've been continually asked about in the Caliente neighborhood. That's one of the primary projects. Do you happen to know off the top of your head what the other projects are other than South Dakota?
I just know they're in the downtown. I don't know the specific street.
So, it's up to you guys whether you would want to table it or not. But I wanted to clarify that.
You don't have the exact date that, in which this work is supposedly supposed to be happening or starting?
That would be with the superintendent. Off the top of my head, I don't know the date. I don't remember if it's in April. I think that we could move it to the April 1st meeting without missing our date. I think so.
Okay. No, I appreciate your honesty on that.
I just don't have every date of every construction project memorized with all of the ones that are going on. Unfortunately, it's just impossible to track it all.
It would be helpful, though, and it's something that we've talked about before in regards to having those maps accessible online and the projects that are upcoming, planned, and even slated for the future, just not only for council's benefit, but for public benefit. So, that way, if a resident has a concern about their street, they could also go on and look and say, "Oh, look, we're going to have maintenance, you know, this coming year or in the spring." As Mr. Billingsley said, I really would hate to see any resident negatively impact, impacted because we were unable to proceed with this vote for $100,000.
Madam Mayor, the expectation by council's been made extremely clear to me. Like I said, this is, this is my shortcoming.
Okay. No, appreciate your honesty. It's okay. Don't beat yourself up over it, but fix it next time. It's okay.
We don't want to impact our citizens, though.
We will make sure to send out those items tomorrow morning as well as get them to Ben Bitter to post them on the website, absolutely, as we always do.
Okay.
There's public notification that goes out as the contractor does the door hangers and, again, we post the signs. So, there's still plenty of notification for the residents.
Okay. Thank you. Well, with that, we do need a motion if there's no further questions.
I'll make a motion to enter into a contract with Cactus Asphalt using the cooperative contract through Pinellas County JOC Contract Number 173923 Asphalt Maintenance and Repair Services, which includes the application of chip seal binder, poly, polymer modified asphalt rubber and fog seal binder for pavement preservation treatment for the Town of Florence CIP T-69 Pavement Preservation Project in an amount not to exceed $103,420.74.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item is discussion approval disapproval to enter into a professional services contract with EUSI LLC for public works management support and consulting services with a new term to expire on June 30th, 2020. Approval Task Order 6 in an amount not to exceed $109,500.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. I'm going to walk through some of the specifics of the tasks. I think at this point, it's been well established what EUSI does for the town. I don't know if I need to go through all the backdrop on that part, so I was going to focus more on the tasks. And then if there are questions, I'd be glad to add all the background in there. The first one is legal and technical assistance with a possible utility provider acquisition. So, this item is in conjunction with the item approved as part of Task 5 that will expire on June 30th, 2019. So, that was a previously approved council task, and that is going to expire here soon. So, with that, we were trying to group all of these items in one for an extension of this item in particular. And it's my understanding that, again, the town is still in need of those services. Item 2 is the Asdepties Permit or Arizona Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. These are required to be updated and the town's permit is going to be up in a matter of months. Town staff? Go ahead, Brent.
Let me explain what that is because the folks in the audience and at home probably don't have an idea what the Niptes Permit process is. So, we have to have a federal water quality permit to be able to discharge our treated effluent at our wastewater treatment plants. That has to be updated by law, and we are in the update cycle right now. And so, that is a technical permit renewal process. And so, for anybody who's wondering what Niptes was or National Pollutant Discharge, that's what that is.
With that permit, due to the recent turnover in the department, we lost our grade-three operator in Jason Joines, who's gone on to another career with Rural Water. We wish him the best, but that has left us with a little bit of a gap. And a lot of the technical stuff, as far as the laboratory work and all that, that is still being able to be done. But there are things on the permitting side that we're not as familiar currently with staff. And so, this item includes, not necessarily in the staff report, but in the backup information, this includes training for staff. I was not comfortable with just having EUSI do the permit. I want our staff to be trained for it for multiple reasons. One, what the permit is, is what we actually work towards. That's our compliance document. So, lack of understanding of that document in its entirety puts the operator disadvantage. There have been times in the past where we have to kind of go backwards and look at that permit. And I felt like that was kind of a weakness early on, is that we did not know the permit in and out. And I think that that's a minimum requirement to operate our plant. So, I thought going through this process by itself may be not as important, but understanding every part of it, I think, will be significantly important for every operator that's part of this, including our superintendent, Tim Wayne Scott. So, it's, there are many parts of this that are very beneficial to the town. But ultimately, right now at our current staffing levels, we really would not have not only the ability, but the time or capacity to go through this detailed thing. We don't have a member of staff who's ever done this. This is something that is not done, obviously, frequently. So, it's a little bit of a challenge for our current staff. Operator of record, as previously mentioned, Jason Joines has left the town and his grade-three operator license has not been fulfilled yet by other operators. We have multiple operators that can test this year for grade-three. When Jason left, we did not have only one person that could take that test and has not taken that test. Since that time, we've had two other members. We would like to, it is a goal of mine, to have at least three to four grade-three operators. Unfortunately, you know, that could cause turnover, too, having that many people with grade-three licenses. There are other opportunities out in the Town of Florence. So, I've been warned multiple times to be very careful what I wish for. But again, the next person who has a grade-one in a year and a half or two years will have a grade-three. That is the goal, not to create turnover, but unfortunately, there will be times where our operators are taken by other things. And as I said at the very beginning, if I can have people that are very good employees and have to turn them over every three to four years, I'd be happy to do that. I would much rather have that than a loyal employee who's not very good for 20 years. So, it's kind of a double-edged sword in a smaller community when we provide the training. I'm assuming that other departments can agree with that statement. So, to put it clearly, we need a grade-three operator license, which we currently don't have. We need that in order to be in compliance with our ADQ requirement. And as stated, we have multiple people will be able to take that test over the next few months. I have budgeted, I believe, six months at that $4,500 a month rate, but I'm hoping that we're not needing that for that long. But in the meantime, we do need that. It's very clear to the operators that they need to strive for that grade-three operator license. The last one is the legal and technical assistance with adopts and rents GSF permitting and development agreement. Brent, would you like to expand upon that?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, as you're familiar, we started down a path of securing our future water three years ago and have invested a lot in that. One of the things that has been a challenge from a water portfolio perspective has been the fact that we have an existing contract with a local landowner to sell them our effluent at a severely decreased price. And that contract was entered into a number of years ago, and we get no credit for that treated effluent when it's used on the farm to water cotton crops. So, there is a provision under the law that would allow for what's called a managed solution to be able to get partial credit for that water that is sent for recharge purposes. We put together a, an application to ADWR last year for that managed solution, and that was rejected. So, part of the task order that you see in front of you is enlisting EUSI to take a look at that and work with the landowner and see if we can do another joint application for a managed solution.
All right. Thank you for that. Any Members of Council have questions? Councilmember Cortez?
So, one, I want to thank you for what you stated about the Level 3 because that was one of my questions, was why we needed to have a consultant for that Level 3 and why we didn't have someone on staff that was that level. So, I appreciate the fact that you recognize that's something we need and that you're working at getting your staff there so that that's one less thing we need a consultant for. Because I've told you before, I don't like consultants to pitch a tent here and never leave. My theory on a consultant is they're here to do a quick service for us and then leave. And in that time, we try to build our staff so that we can perform the duties that the consultant was doing. I hope that when those Level 3s, when they reach Level 3, that it's not just an incentive for them because you said, you know, you're worried that they may leave, but that we compensate them in one way or another for reaching a Level 3. I don't know what that is. I'm assuming it must not be easy if it takes a couple of years to get there, whether it's through like a journeyman-type program or what it is. But that's always my concern, is making sure that we have the qualified staff here and that we do best by our employees to keep them so we don't have to worry about someone else taking them. So, I just wanted to say I appreciate the fact that you recognize that and that you are working for and have a plan and that you understand we might lose one or two, but hopefully, when we lose them, we have one already in line to step right back up and take that test and become a Level 3 as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Cortez, I appreciate you saying that. This is something that we can look into as the Budget Committee, and we can bring that up at discussions, much in a way that we compensate employees that have certain certifications in other departments as well.
Question?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, point well taken. And for the credit of those individuals that are trying to get their grade-three, our current permits require a grade-three license. It's not the highest license. A grade-four license is the highest license. They are very much in demand and it is not simple. It's not just spending three years at a wastewater treatment plant. It is a journeyman-type system, and sometimes it takes more than a decade. Sometimes people don't even reach the grade-three status that have a desire. There's a great amount of knowledge and education that goes into that. The fastest that I've ever seen somebody get a grade-three license was an individual that worked for me previously and now is the Public Works Director in Coolidge, and he was able to attain it in three years, but he's a registered civil engineer in the state of Arizona. So, that makes people that have grade-three and above licenses very desirable. And the consideration for just compensation for those folks to try and keep them is definitely a conversation that we need to have.
Yeah, I think that Ms. Cortez, Councilmember Cortez, I agree with everything you said, first off. Spot application is where I feel most comfortable with a consultant. At the time, Mr. Tim Wayne Scott was our water superintendent, and so while I had pushed him to obtain his license as a wastewater grade-three for this exact reason, he has, you know, other priorities in life, a young child and other things, and so he's been studying for a little bit. It's just the fact that we kind of got caught flat-footed. In a community as small as ours with as few operators we have, it is a challenge. I am not here to make excuses, but one of our other, you know, stars in our organization has only been with a wastewater operator for two years. So, unfortunately, the bar is clear. We are going to obtain it this fiscal year, but it will be a challenge. Like I said, three years is probably the fastest it's ever been done by a registrant, no less. It is definitely a challenge, but we're going to get it done. And we've had one person test incredibly close already, incredibly close. So, I think we're, I think we're on the verge. In the meantime, I think it's fair to say that we've had a complete turnover in the way that we view the wastewater operations plant. And while this is happening, I see this as a great opportunity for members of the wastewater team to get a new bite at EUSI that the first time, I think, that they didn't unfortunately have. We have a new superintendent. Things are being done a lot differently. There are things that we've been talking about just in the last two meetings, including something we talked about today that maybe that Brent has not even been made aware of yet. It could be a three and a half million dollar change in our It could be a three and a half million dollar change in our future CIP and a reduction. So there's just a, I think it's a great opportunity while, um, there is a cost to it. I see it as a supreme benefit for a short term while we kind of reevaluate every CIP project, every operation, every logbook, every round. Mr. Hendricks and Mr. Wayne Scott are going through every last thing. So for me, it's a bit refreshing because we have absolute transparency right now with that I can see every last detail of it. So it's, it's, it's actually been a good thing for, I think, for the town in this, in this weird way, um, the turnover.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Anderson?
Uh, do we have to have, uh, certain categories at each wastewater facility? Do, is there?
No. I, I, there's a minimum for each one, but there just needs to be one license that the town, um, is with ADEQ.
Okay. Well, you know, my other question, I guess, uh, we've talked about future wastewater plants as we expand. Uh, I think, you know, it's, it's rather important that, that we get all this, uh, lined up and, and have people trained, because the, you know, lack of operator could stop us from, you know, opening up a new plant.
That is a fair assessment. And I, like I said, I think that, I think the expectation is clear. I think we are, we are very close to obtaining that. It's just that, uh, with all due respect to our current operators, they are not all the most experienced, including, like I said, the one that's already tested and barely missed it. And I do believe that I, I have zero doubts that Mr. Wayne Scott will obtain it in the next six months, no doubt.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Larson?
The only question I had was about the level three certification. If I caught you right, did you say that we, we were, we're footing the bill for that training or for through, for that program for them to receive that certification?
Um.
Currently?
There, to be fair, to be completely honest, we do perform, we do pay for some training. Um, some of the stuff though is on the individual to pay upfront, including taking the tests, and then the town reimburses them only for past tests. We do not reimburse for failed tests, unfortunately.
Okay.
Um, so, but some of these things can be expensive. Sometimes the individuals buy additional books. I don't know if it's through embarrassment, but they don't always ask me for every last thing, even though we tell them, please let us know what we can do. So there is, there's definitely a cost, and there's only so much time. I hate to bring up this obvious point, there's only so much time in the day. So for someone like Tim who left at four o'clock and got in before six o'clock this morning, if it's a 10 hour plus day, he doesn't have time to study on the clock, which is a common practice in a bigger municipality. So then he's got to find time off the clock to study. And currently, the way that we're staffed, our other operators do not have time to study on the clock. So that's, that's a real difficult thing to take on. The, to the level three, if I remember right, I think there's 763 pages in the first volume, and so there's probably over 2,000 pages of written by the established test taker themselves of reading material to get to a grade three, over 2,000 pages.
Yeah. My, my meaning, meaning for that question was that maybe, obviously this is more of a day-to-day operations thing, but during the budget, um, committee, we could discuss other ways to have, um, maybe boot both up what we're willing to offer with that, but then also have some type of contract to say, you'll stay with us for X amount of time if the turnover is an issue. Um, you know, so just some things that we can discuss. I'm certainly for, um, looking at the compensation as well, but just some, I just wanted to get some feedback from you as far as.
I will be glad to talk to the, the structures out there that exist in other local, nearby Arizona communities to the town manager.
Certainly something to look at. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further questions regarding that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to re-enter into a professional services contract with UCLLC for public works management support consulting services with a term, new term to expire June 30th, 2020. Approval of task order six not to exceed $109,500.
A second. Motion and a second?
Ma'am, I just want to make sure that we get that right. It's EUSI for the record.
Yes.
If you're okay with the motion and the second. Otherwise, it would have been the wrong company name.
I'll correct it. Approval, we're going to re-enter into a professional services contract with EUSILLC for public works management support consulting services with a new term to expire June 30th, 2020. Approval of task force, task order six not to exceed $109,500.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E is discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a contract with Arizona Correctional Industries for repairs to the Silver King Hotel deck. Handrails and stairway and replacement of materials, including prep for concrete at the west patio by using state statute 41 dash 2636 in an amount not to exceed $53,418.30. Mr. Chris Alice.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, kind of wish this item had gone first, because I'm probably most excited about this. The, the Silver King has been a, a long-term project, as you all know. We approved it, I think, in the previous budget, and we approved $80,000. Without, we were trying to avoid putting $40,000 into architectural plans when we only had an $80,000 budget, and we thought that we could accomplish that. And truthfully, the first time through, we were unable to accomplish that. We put together scope of work, worked through many different contractors and eventually put it out for bid, and we received a total of one bid for $80,000 for half the project. So we were extremely disappointed in the bids, and we understood after speaking to the contractors, they felt there was a lack of clarity maybe in the documents, even though we didn't necessarily agree with that. Uh, we kind of took it on the chin and repurposed our, our documents and worked through a series of JOCs in other communities. And every JOC we reached out to, their version of a JOC on the building safety department or, or facilities, maintenance department is essentially, they hook us up with a general contractor, he then goes finds contractors, and it just bloated the, the bill once again. And we were just unable to budget this project a second time. And so Tom Selaya came up with the idea of using ACI, um, which the town uses for other projects, but I was curious how we were going to be able to do this through the procurement laws that we have. And so Tom, I believe, worked primarily with Joe Jarvis to, uh, complete this and make sure this was all legal for the procurement, and I couldn't be happier. So we've, instead of going for $80,000 for a portion of the project, we are now down to, uh, reading carefully, $41,000, 091, plus a contingency for a majority of the project. That does not include some of the concrete work that we have proposed, and that does not include the painting that we have proposed. We are currently working with Larry Harmer and Jennifer Evans on getting all of our SHPO approvals and going to HDAC for whatever items that they see fit. So we are a little bit in front of those approvals tonight, but July 1st is rapidly approaching. And I, I live with those deadlines all year, but as we start to getting into, um, March, obviously they become very real for me. We don't have a lot of time, so hopefully that all of the approvals can get done with the correspondence that Larry's already done. I'm, I'm hopeful. So this material, this is, um, this will essentially be redoing for the most part. And this, in this contract here is the decking that is deteriorated, um, for the, for the actual deck, uh, the staircase and the staircases. The existing wooden pickets will be replaced with metal that is the same as on the east side. So that'll all be metal and that will be all constructed. So that will be more all-weather and a much more durable product. And then the decking will be replaced with, uh, the Trex product, again, assuming that SHPO approves that and the HDAC approves that. And then eventually, the idea is to do the decking on the, no, south side, no, 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 west side of the building. That will all be torn down because the floor joists are essentially completely deteriorated at this point. So the idea is to use a stamped concrete, be very durable, be very aesthetically pleasing, and it'll have the same pattern as what we used on Main Street in our intersection projects. So that's what, um, Tom is, is finishing out there. So again, could not be more thrilled at the price and the project, and at this point, um, just look forward to getting it done.
I think it's great whenever we can use those partnerships, especially with the Arizona Correctional Industries. In reviewing some of the pictures, on page 542 out of 569, I don't know if you can scroll to it, but I was wondering, do we have woodpeckers? Like, I'm trying to figure out what caused that damage.
Which page?
We do have woodpeckers and cactus wrens, and they both bore holes in our houses and, and properties, yes. I don't have the picture in front of me, but yes, that's a known problem in Florence.
I know a lot of, I know a lot of this is, um, from what I understand, is just wood rot by, again, the, the choice of materials that was chosen. Uh, I'm not here to speak poorly of what the project was previously done. I just understand that it's not a typical material to be used, and, um, it's reached its design life, apparently. And so.
Is that part that I'm asking about though, is that being replaced with metal?
I'm, I'm looking at the picture right now, uh, and that is actually wood rot, that's water rot. Um, so I believe they're using treated lumber for the structure and then Trex for the decking. So from what I'm looking at, that's probably a structural component, so that'd be treated lumber.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, in the, uh, scope of work, it says, uh, re-secure, repair all acorn caps, but over in the quote, uh, it says that, uh, uh, the acorn cap repair is not included.
That's, that's correct. Uh, there, as Chris just mentioned, um, some of the finishing items, including the paint, et cetera, they're not included as part of this. This is just the construction work. Those acorn caps have to be actually cut on a lathe.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, um, although I didn't work on the scope, multiple of the finish items, they have to still go to HDAC, et cetera.
So they didn't respond to the scope of work?
I'm trying, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to find exactly in the, in the attached.
Okay.
I understand that part, but I'm just saying is, in the attached scope of work here, it's a demolition of the west side surface joist, handrail steps, and re-secure all ornamental work. Okay.
The scope of work says, re-secure, repair all acorn caps.
And then it's eliminated where else, sir? I'm sorry, the other part?
Their quote on the.
Okay.
ACI's quote.
Okay. I, I now fully understand. Okay, it's the quote versus this.
Yeah.
They did, they did submit on our scope of work, but they don't have that professional type of equipment, apparently, to create these. So Tom is going to have to do that external to that. You are correct.
Okay.
The scope of work that they provided in their quote is their scope of work. This is what we were asking of them. And so sometimes when we ask for things this general, people are not able to fulfill all the scope of work.
I want to make sure it wasn't oversight. Thank you.
My apologies for not understanding the question fully at first.
So the, the decking in the back of the Silver King, so like I'm looking at a picture and I can see where the screws went in and when the screws went in, it split the, the boards, and that's where there's like, and if you're, if, I'm sure you've walked it, there's lots of areas where you can, you can tell it wasn't done correctly the, for the last time. So I don't know when that was done. Do you know when the decking was redone back there?
The decking was done as part of the grant projects, uh, that occurred in, in the mid 2000s. Um, one of the things that we noticed when we started looking into the project was, number one, structurally underneath that ground deck, um, the structural component was not done correctly. Not only the, not the right materials, but also in terms of foundational implementation. And actually, Bill and I did repairs on it a year and a half ago, uh, as, as well as Tom. Um, I don't know why, uh, they chose not to use the right materials, the right support, et cetera. Uh, it's been many years ago that, that that was done, but it certainly has caused a challenge. One of the things that Chris is looking at, and keep in mind, that bottom deck is not included as part of the quote that you see. One of the things that Chris is looking at, uh, in terms of implementation is tearing that out and replacing that with a stamped concrete, stamped and colored concrete, so we don't have those problems. The trip hazards, the ADA issues, et cetera, as part of that project, but we need SHPO to approve that.
So, um, I, I did understand that it was not part of the, um, quote, but thank you for, uh, making sure that was clarified. When you quoted that out, when you get that quoted, are you going to quote it to extend the deck so that it's at, ending at both ends of the building, or are you going to just still keep it where it currently is? So basically, would you extend it to come to the edge of the fudge, where the fudge shop is and include their little stairway that goes up to their building or to their entrance? Or would it just end?
I believe.
I think there's like a air conditioner or something right there now that I think about it.
Yes, there is. At this time, it is 100% my understanding that we are only replacing essentially what is there.
What is there. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, the, if we go to concrete, it's not going to be that high, is it? Unless we put some kind of retainer walls.
Sir, uh, the renderings that I've seen, uh, would be at grade with that, similar to what's outside the fudge shop. So there would be improvements to take, take people down from the height of the doors of the buildings to match the, uh, the concrete that would be at grade. You're, you're correct. If we wanted it to be on the same level as that existing bottom deck, we would have to build a, a significant structure underneath that. That probably wouldn't be good from a budget standpoint, assuming that we could get approved from, from SHPO to have an alternate means and methods.
Okay. If not, maybe we could look at the price of, uh, that composite, uh, decking they have now that you don't ever even have to paint. It's got, comes in grays and browns and I think blue and green, but.
Well, the approval of the, the, the deck is not part of this pri, this particular project.
No, I know, it's not this. It's not what we're voting on tonight. I'm just saying for the future, you know, if they don't, if SHPO doesn't approve the concrete, then we maybe look at the, uh, because that doesn't have any protection from the weather whatsoever. There's no, uh, roof over it like there is on the rest of the decking upstairs, you know? So it's going to be getting wet and it's going to have the sun shining on it.
What?
Four, seven.
What I was going to add was that we definitely, while it's, it's going to be under the manager's threshold for this next approval, I'd be glad to bring that back to council with a couple of renderings of what we're going to do.
Right.
Because I don't have that level. We, this is literally a working project as we're getting approvals on there, and it's going to be dependent on the SHPO approvals. So I would be glad to bring that back to a future council, even though it's not a requirement. We would be glad to bring it back for approval of, you know, the physical features of it, if you would.
Right. Well, we're not there yet, so we're, that's the next.
That would be great if you could though, because it's hard to, because you said it's not going to be as tall, so visually, I'm trying to picture, so they're going to be, so that would be great if we could see what it would look like once we get to that portion of this project.
I, I can definitely put it on a future council agenda.
Mayor and councilmember Hawkins, uh, your point is well taken, as well on the materials. Just to reemphasize to council, we will be using alternate materials, including Trex, which is the material that you're speaking to, that's the composite material, on the upper deck for the wearing surface. So for consistency purposes, if we were going to rebuild the deck, we would likely use alternate materials to match the deck that's up above.
Well, it's, it's great stuff. It's no maintenance at all. I mean, it.
It works.
Councilmember Larson?
Um, I just have a couple of questions, and stop me if I can't talk about this, because it's not really in the scope of work. But while we're in front of SHPO, is there an opportunity for us to be talking about the little corner of the, of the patio up on top to loop it around and see if they would approve something like that? So if we could bring that back and possibly talk about it, if that's the case?
Number one, uh, we already in the process of, of working with SHPO, but I guess, um, we could. Uh, the architect, based on the previous approval, has already started the design of that and is under contract to get that work done. So that, that would, money would be, would be lost. But yes, I, the simple answer is yes, we could.
I mean, do we have the option? I don't know. I've never worked with them personally, so I don't, how, do we have the option to say, hey, these are some things we're thinking about doing? Would you approve this? Would you approve?
Well, you have to provide renderings, et cetera. So not only would we have wasted the money that we've already spent on the architect to do the plans for the internal, but then we would have to spend money on the external for the design and the renderings to provide to SHPO. for the design and the renderings to provide to SHPO. We can do it, we're just going to spend additional funds.
Didn't we use prior renderings for the internal one, if I remember correctly?
No, no, no. There was a shaded area. They're actively working on the plan set right now for the internal improvement, and there are no renderings or drawings or plans for that other improvement. So we can ask SHPO whatever we want. We're just expending more money to go ahead and do that, and we've already moved forward on solution number one.
Okay. My other question was about, you said the handrails are metal? Did I hear that correctly?
The handrail slash pickets on the east, the west side are all metal, yes.
I just had some questions as far as what items we're using. That Trex is a great product. I know I've had that personally on a deck before. However, if it gets wet, it does get very slippery, something I want us to be aware of. Also, it does warp when it gets extremely hot. It's plastic, it warps, so it's not completely maintenance-free like everybody thinks it really is. So there are some concerns that I maybe have with what we're actually using for that project. I know wood obviously isn't the best either. There's, I think there's pros and cons to all these different products.
Well, for the weathering, essentially, that deck is fully covered, so there shouldn't be too much water that reaches that.
Okay.
And apparently, people will have to apply some amount of common sense for themselves if during a rainstorm they want to be out in the deck, you know? But I will make sure to pass that on to our facilities manager to make sure that the Trex somehow has a certain coefficient of friction for them.
Yeah, it might be something you can spray on top to add a little grit to it, type of thing.
I will bring that to his attention.
My other concern was with the metal, and obviously, with 100 and some degrees out, and if people are touching a metal railing, that was my other concern, is if there was any type of padding or covering that would be over that, or if that metal would be causing any type of issue.
As of today, it's planned for a powder-coated steel, just like the rest of it. We've never received any complaints on the rest of it, so I assume it must operate satisfactorily. But I can bring that up, too, again.
That is under roof, again. I mean, so it's, it might get a little morning sun on it, but we're trying to come up with solutions so we don't have to do this every 15 years. And metal is about the best, and if it's powder-coated, that'll last forever. And another thing on that, if you're talking about the decking that I'm talking about, it's about that thick, well, you should have your floor joists, I've seen quite a bit of it, and I've never seen any of it warped. So I'm wondering how far apart your floor joists are if it warped, because I've seen a lot of that around, and I've never seen any of it warped. But of course, your floor joist, what are they supposed to be, 18 inches or standard?
It would depend on the material, I love it too, sir, but yes.
Well, I'm talking about that plastic, it's a composite of different kinds of plastic or whatever, but, and it's solid. It's not hollow, but...
Counselmember Larson, I'm sure that you paid for a high-grade piece of material. I don't want to speak poorly of your house.
No, no, no.
But we will make sure that we bring up those comments as we spec the material and make sure that, again, it's addressed, that this is industrial/commercial use.
Right.
That will have foot traffic on it, and that is a concern of ours. We'll make sure that we make that abundantly clear.
Yes, thank you. Really good warranty, yes.
Counselmember Wall?
I just want to summarize for my own edification what the timeline is. I know this is a three-part project, the decking, the painting, the concrete. Do all three of those components have to be run through SHPO? And if so, by approving this contract, are we putting the cart before the horse?
No, because it's not a contract like you would normally think. We're obligating ourselves with ACI. If we afterwards have to modify it, we'll come back to council for the approval. If we have to counsel it due to SHPO, we'll come back to council and approve it. So as I understand it, there is no necessary obligation. It's kind of just forward-thinking. If we get this, then we have something. As we've done with W-3883, we've taken approvals before council because of deadlines for the schools or fire flows due to July 1st budget. We're driven to believe that July 1st budgets are really important to us, so we try to get all our projects done that we can, because if not, if we budget it for this reason and then we don't budget for the carryforwards, it really puts us in a real predicament the following year, especially in the facilities, because Tom has zero fluff in his budget. If he has to take a $40,000 hit next year, it is, it's something he can't overcome.
So we're trying to get our ducks in a row before the end of the fiscal year.
We're also very excited about the price. If you've seen the previous bids and the previous prices that we've had on this work.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to see it move forward as quickly as possible. I just was afraid that if there were subsequent approvals that may or may not come, that we haven't obligated ourselves to a contract that we can't fulfill or that can't be fulfilled.
It's definitely fair to say that I'm an educated risk taker. We've been meeting with Larry and Jennifer. They believe our stuff, you know, has a very good chance of approval, and if it doesn't, we will come back and modify our scope of work. I think it's worth to try to get the project done rather than to sit back and wait for all of our approvals, then get on a council agenda in I-don't-know-what-month and fail to get our goals done. So we're very well aware of, I guess, the limited risks that we're taking on this.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there is no further questions or comments, I would appreciate a motion of either approval or disapproval, and you can quote it as mayor read rather than reading the whole thing again.
I think a motion to authorize a contract with Arizona Correctional Industries.
I second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Benjamin Bitter, do you have anything for the legislative update? I saw a few good things on the call this morning.
Yeah, I think, thanks, mayor. I think the one bill we'd want to talk about today is House Bill 2047. This is a bill sponsored by Representative Cook. At the beginning of the session, I believe, at our legislative agenda, when I posted that, it was actually a bad bill. It was a bill that was shifting money away from, effectively, Penale County, Maricopa County, and Pima County for our transportation funding, so our HERF dollars. The bill has since been amended, and it is now a positive bill, where the impact would be about a $60 million increase to HERF funding across the state. Half of that would go to counties, half of that to cities, and there would be a baseline established for all cities where you'd receive at least $100,000. We receive more than that each year. But the bill right now has passed through the House. It is in a Senate committee tomorrow morning. Again, we've signed in support of that bill at this point after the positive amendment that would bring additional funding dollars to the town of Florence. So positive movements there. Also, just as a side note, our pension bill that we've talked a couple times about is in committee this Thursday, Senate Bill 1186. That's in the House government, it passed unanimously out of the Senate, now in the House committee on Thursday morning at 9:00 AM. With that, happy to answer any questions that I can.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for that update. Managers report.
Madam Mayor, nothing to report.
Thank you. This is our second call to the public. I have a speaker's request from Mr. Jerry Raybert. How are you this evening?
Fine, thank you. Mayor Walter and council members, I am Jerry Raybert. My wife and I own the Jean-Baptiste Mischia Residence and Loan Star Store in 220 East Ruggles in the Florence Townsite Historic District. Those who know me will remember, I have been a longtime critic of how the town operates and treats the historic district. I have also advocated spending an equal amount of money on the historic district and the businesses within as the town is spending on other areas around the district. I am requesting the council delay demolition of the two historic properties until a complete evaluation of the structural integrity of these structures can be performed and the feasibility of stabilizing the walls and securing the property can be assessed. This should include open meetings, not council meetings, with historic district residents and business owners for ideas and consultation with the state preservation office for assistance. There are two points I wish to make, but to discuss them would require more than the three minutes allotted and would not be permitted. Hopefully, presenting these will open the door for further discussion. The town of Florence needs to make a complete commitment to preservation within the historic district, not just lip service, but in dollars and action. The town of Florence also needs to develop an aggressive outreach program to deal with apathy and promote civic engagement. I am willing to meet with any council member and/or staff to go into more detail. The end results of this discussion should be made available to all the council members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just to take a moment just to respond to you, many of the things that you had mentioned, we had performed in our due diligence, and if you would take a moment to schedule a meeting with either our town manager or Mr. Benjamin Bitter, they can take some time and talk with you, and I'm willing to join as well. You're very welcome. Okay, any other people that would like to speak? Call to the public? Okay, closing call to the public. Call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Judy Hughes?
It's been brought to my attention that I need to state on New Business 9E that I did not vote, so that there was no miscommunication on that. I thought it was clear.
Counselmember Cortez?
Yes, so I attended the school board meeting last week, and just wanted to let everyone know that they did report that they have their certified staff that has signed its contracts for the next year, that it was 89.1% of their staff, their certified staff, which is a huge accomplishment for Florence Unified School District in a number they haven't seen in quite some time, according to them, which is what they stated. I also wanted to let everybody know, I was at L&amp;B the other day, we frequent that a lot, and they are celebrating on March 30th, 45 years in business. The current owner has owned it for five years, but the restaurant itself has been there for 45 years, and so they're going to celebrate that on March 30th. It'll be an all-day event, and they're going to have all different kinds of things going on, so I'd love to encourage everybody to drop into L&amp;B and help them celebrate their success. That's it.
Thank you. Did you want to share a little about your Say Yes to Prom?
It went fantastic. The Say Yes to Prom event went great. It is something that I do in conjunction with Florence Unified School District. They provide me the space to store the dresses and to hold the event. And we had, last count, when I checked my check-in sheet, there was almost 60 girls who attended, and every single one of them left with a dress, shoes, and jewelry. That all came through donations from people within the community. The Cinderella Fair donates, has started donating to us, which has been a huge thing to get items from them. But 90% of our items that we have come from community members in Florence, in Santan Valley, and basically the Florence Unified School District. And we had people come from as far as Pine Top? No, not Pine Top. One of those P places, and Maricopa. And they specifically came to that event because they saw it on Facebook. So I just appreciate everybody helping us get the word out. And my volunteers are awesome, and I absolutely adore everything they do for me. Some of the community businesses also help me, so it's been a great partnership, and I look forward to a couple more years.
Thank you. Counselmember Wall?
I don't have anything, thanks.
Counselmember Hawkins?
I have nothing.
Vice Mayor Anderson, I, did I miss you, Councilmember Larson?
That's all right.
Councilmember Larson, sorry, I circled your name and...
Yeah, I'll forgive you.
Go ahead.
No, I don't really have anything, except for we're starting on the budget season, and we had a great meeting today. I thoroughly enjoy being a part of the budget committee and working with you guys. It's been a joy, and I look forward to the next couple of days with you guys. That's all I have for me.
Next couple of long days. Vice Mayor Anderson?
I attended the Penale County Water Augmentation Meeting on Tuesday, and I shared some of the information with our town manager. The recharge credits that we were hoping, that didn't expire in, what, 2025, are not going to expire, but there's some complications as to what they're going to allow, and we're still trying to get the final word on that. But it appears that we will get some credits for our recharge zones. The other thing, it was sort of exciting, I guess, the managers of the Water Augmentation Board made a presentation to the county supervisors, and one of the county supervisors took them to task over what was going on. So they're still trying to recover from that, but it's sort of interesting, you know, to go to those meetings, because you hear a lot of the politics involved in Penale County. And of course, they're still trying to protect the water in Penale County, being in between Pima and Maricopa, the two big towns want to take everything away from us, so it's an ongoing battle. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank everybody who attended this evening. We do have a couple of events coming up that I want to make sure everybody is aware of. This coming Saturday, the Women's Club is hosting a fashion show, and tickets are $15, and the proceeds go to scholarships for young ladies that are graduating from Florence High School. And we also have on March 30th, not only is it opening day for Florence Little League, but we also have the CERT team through the Fire Department, which is their community emergency response training going on throughout different areas of town. And if you can go out and attend, I think you will receive some valuable training that you could utilize in the event of an emergency. Lastly, also on March 30th is the 75th GI Celebration, starting with a parade at 10:00 AM, and an event following at Padilla Park behind the Silver King. So I hope to see everybody out and about. It is the final week of spring break, so our kiddos are still out there, so please be careful. We are going to adjourn to an executive session, but we will come out and adjourn publicly as well. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side?